Good evening, we are live streaming as of now, just so everybody knows.
Trade is inbound.
Lindsay, I believe the list is complete for panelists.
Thank you Sue, that was a huge help.
Thank you.
Lindsay, are you there?
Chair Horstman, I am here, I just got ahold of Supervisor Begay and she is hopping from one meeting and coming into this on her phone.
Very good, and so is it, I know I saw that Herana Mavazquez was there and of course I'm here and is Judy our third, is that correct?
That's correct.
When she's on, please let me know, we'll start.
Lindsay, do you, there we go Lindsay, she's there.
Alright. Well, good evening everyone, thank you for joining us this evening, this is a special session of the Coquenino County Board of Supervisors and Coquenino County Flood Control District Board of Directors. And before we turn it over to the staff and our experts, I'd like to take roll call of the Board of Directors who are present here for this special session of the Board of Supervisors and the Flood Control District. So District 1 is myself, my name is Patrice Horstman. I am the Chair for the Coquenino County Board of Supervisors and therefore the Chair of the Flood Control District. District 2.
Good evening everyone, my name is Herana Mavazquez, I'm Supervisor District 2 and current Vice Chair of the Board.
District 3. District 3 actually is on a well-deserved summer vacation and he is not going to be with us, that is Matt Ryan. District 4.
Good evening everyone, this is Judy Begay, a board of Coquenino County Board of Supervisor for District 4, good evening.
Thank you Judy, and District 5. Is Lena Fowler with us this evening?
She is not Madam Chair, she had family matters to attend to, thank you.
Alright, thank you, and members of the community, we do have a quorum of the Board of Supervisors. I do want to welcome everyone this evening, also I want to note, as everyone knows, while we are meeting here this evening, both the pipeline and the haywire fire continues and firefighters are out there, we want to give them a big thank you for their hard work and their dedication for our community and we know we're going to bring these, both of these fires under control here in the not-too-distant future. And of course, as always, we need to thank our incredibly resilient and patient community, especially those in the Timberline, the Wapaki Trails, Fernwood and Doni Park area. I know for many of you, it just seems like deja vu all over again and we understand that this has been a difficult time and we want to assure you that the county has been there with you from the beginning and will continue to be there with you as we work forward on not only the fire suppression but also in the possibility of post wildfire flood mitigation. And we have with us this evening a number of individuals, both from the county and also with J E Fuller, who quite frankly, from almost the inception of these fires, commenced modeling the possibility of post wildfire flooding. And so they are going to be here today and provide us a lot of information. I am very much looking forward to hearing what they have to say and also to talk about what we can do now and in the future to prepare for this. And I want to just underscore for everyone here, please buy flood insurance. The number one thing you can do to prepare now is buy your flood insurance and be sure to sign up for the county's emergency notification. It's the best way to keep up to date on what's going on. And then of course, stay informed, take a look on a regular basis at the county website for updates. It's where you can get accurate and factual information. So please, everybody, we're in this together and let's move forward, let's get the information and we as a community will move forward and we'll get this done. So with that, I would like to turn it over to our Flood Control Director, Lucinda Andriani, who has been working pretty much around the clock since these fires started. And I know she has a lot of information to share and we'll introduce the individuals who are going to be presenting this evening. So Lucinda, at that, I'm turning this over to you and I'm turning off my camera, so thank you, Lucinda.
Alright, thank you Chair. Lindsay, just to check in on protocol, does the Chair, do they need to go into a meeting, is there anything that needs to be done?
We do.
Thank you, Flood Control District.
We do, and I forgot about that and I apologize, so that's our introduction. So now we're going to go into the actual items on the agenda. This is a discussion for the Flood Control District and so at this time, I would ask members of the Board to please entertain a motion to resolve as the Flood Control District, do I have a motion?
A motion that would, oh, go ahead, go ahead Judy.
So move.
Judy has moved, do I have a second?
A second.
Second from Vice Chair Vasquez, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. It is unanimous, we are now the Flood Control District Board of Directors and with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Flood Control District Director, Lucinda Andriani, thank you Lucinda.
Alright, thank you Chair Horstman and good evening everyone, it's, I have to say that it's with some sadness that we're all back together under these circumstances. You know, to have all of you had to experience two fires and now the, again, potential for post wildfire flooding. You know, I think all of us didn't really expect this and as she noted, I want to emphasize, you know, and I want to say from my heart to you, one, that I'm, you know, I'm very concerned about you, this is a lot of, you know, you went through a lot of trauma with these fires and those of you that were involved in the Schultz flooding and I want you to know that, I recognize that, I was, certainly I didn't live in the area but you know, I was out there extensively and I really dedicated my life for certainly those first five years through the first five to six years to trying to address the flood impacts and fortunately, those measures have been, beyond a thousand-year rainfall event in 2018, have been very successful in mitigating the, some very intense rain events that we have had on the Schultz burn scar. Now we witnessed another two fires, fortunately Tunnel burned a lot of the lower slopes and burned fairly moderately, so that burnt the burn area and Joe Leverage will share the update on the burn severity for you, but you know, I think we had identified about thirty-six homes that would be at risk for flooding coming out of that and the kind of Copeland up through Brandis area primarily. But now we had the pipeline fire, so we have another impact and that's a more significant impact, that fire burned more severely and again, Joe will get into that, so. Um, so go ahead, go to the next slide. I wanted to share because the pipeline fire did also affect the Schultz Creek watershed, which is just west of the museum slash Spruce Avenue Wash watershed and that does drain into the city of Flagstaff on the west side. And tonight, I want to make sure it's clear to everyone that the focus of this meeting is going to be on the east side, what we're now referring to as the Schultz Pipeline flood area. We will not be addressing the Schultz Creek area. We are working with the city, our, the district's hydrologist, again Joe Leverage with J Fuller is conducting the modeling. We did not have existing modeling of that watershed, so they're still working through some of the modeling details of that and we have some very preliminary information, but the city will be setting up a meeting and for that area specifically. Very glad to report that the museum flood area, the burn scar for museum on the Spruce Avenue Wash was not impacted by the pipeline fire, so the flood threat there remains a result solely of the museum fire. So that's good news that it wasn't further compromised by that fire. There's some additional information here on that slide in terms if you have questions about the FEMA floodplains. The Rio is a FEMA floodplain within the city of Flagstaff and also if you want to receive updates from the city, those of you that live within the city. There's some information here of who to contact. Those of you that are on, within the county, particularly the Magnalena area. In fact, we have someone out there this evening that's going door-to-door and will be, there's a small number of homes there that may be impacted by flooding, some potential flooding and that communication will be communicating, the district, Flood Control District will be communicating with you directly. Again, the city of Flagstaff manages the floodplains within the city and it's important that they have that information, we don't manage those floodplains or the relationship with FEMA within the city, so they'll be managing those communications. So, next slide there Sean, please. So I want to touch on a little history because I know some people are new to the area and new to the Timberline, Wapaki Trails, Fernwood and Doni Park areas. We have new residents in this area who may not have experienced the Schultz fire and subsequent flooding. So I want to touch on a few of the facts and history there. This map shows the burn severity that took place during the Schultz fire in 2010, it started on Father's Day 2010 and you can see that a significant, a number of the watersheds burned very severely and on very, very steep slopes. And most of you that live out there, you can look up on the mountain now and you're certainly well aware of that and you're well aware that certainly there's been return of grasses and brush and that type of thing but not been much recovery in terms of trees or other things, that that watershed will take decades to recover, maybe centuries frankly, depending upon our climate. So, and through that, we had eight watersheds that were pretty significantly impacted, next slide please. So the Flood Control District immediately mobilized. We, though, with that, over through a three-year period there, we experienced fifty-five flood events, events that, rainfall events that created flooding within the neighborhoods, significant flooding within the neighborhoods and it affected hundreds. I think initially our count was somewhere between a thousand and fifteen hundred homes and the flooding was so severe that it did trigger a presidential disaster declaration and you can see some of the photographs there, how significant the flooding was. Next slide, we immediately began to mobilize for long, both immediate, what we call emergency mitigation, sandbags, barrier. I think ultimately we had over six and a half miles of concrete barrier that was placed into the neighborhood and over about between a million and a half and two million sandbags. So this was a major undertaking and between the time the fire was out and the time that the monsoons began, we had about two weeks and frankly, we didn't know much about post wildfire flooding then. And, but we mobilized tremendous resources, Supervisor Archuleta, Supervisor Mandy Mixter. They worked tremendously at the federal level and we secured resources over thirty-one million dollars that was invested in projects during, since 2011, we also had millions that were spent in addition to that in terms of response and some short-term mitigation. You know, the immediate emergency mitigation was also millions and millions of dollars. So you can see the different resources that were secured and it was a property owner-driven process. A corridor by corridor, to each of those corridors that were being impacted, we met with those property owners and walked through the mitigation that was proposed and they had to provide drainage easements and some corridors elected not to go forward and we respected that but we worked with the corridors that did, and if you look at this map to the left, you can see that the corridors that were mitigated were South Paintbrush, which comes in at the top of, of Paintbrush and actually Paintbrush North, which you're going to see as Siesta Paintbrush now, they actually converge there at the, at the top of Paintbrush Lane. Then we move up to Campbell, which comes in there at the top of Campbell and then we had the Copeland and Peaceful Watersheds, which elected not to move forward with mitigation. And then we worked with the Brandis Way, Thames watershed and major projects were done there as well as in Wapaki Trails, so again, we mitigated five of the seven watersheds, you know, that were in this area that were impacted, seven to eight, there's, some were subwatersheds but in effect, eight watersheds. Important to understand that both on- and off-forest measures were constructed. The agreement with the Forest Service was that we had to have continuous mitigation. If we were going to put mitigation measures, sediment reduction measures and on-forest that we had to have continuous mitigation to the highway, to Highway eighty-nine and which in the end was a really important step. And the on-forest mitigation, many of you that have probably hiked back in there on these, on these flood corridors, that on-forest mitigation, restoring the alluvial fans and then collecting up the water and having it flow through the channels. Those alluvial fan restoration and other measures that were taken on for us were extremely successful in mitigating the flood, again, the only major flood impacts that we've had since then was the thousand-year rainfall event in 2018 that affected the Brandis Way, Peaceful Area, peaceful watersheds. And to date, we've had, in fact, very little water even leave the forest in some very major rainfall events on the burn area. So next slide. These were the design assumptions, I think what's important to understand is that we, with, to understand is that in these post wildfire flooding situations, you can get six to ten times or even greater volumes of floodwater than you would get pre-fire. And so we were, we came up with a design storm, we conducted for every mitigation project, we conducted what's called no adverse impact analysis and we were very diligent about revegetating areas overall, some was more successful in the channels than others, I'll say, but. And we tried to stay within the existing right-of-way that the county had in the area, which was just the roads, we didn't have any drainage. This area had never experienced flooding historically of anything of this magnitude. There had been minor localized flooding but had never experienced anything like this before. Next slide please. Then we had the Tunnel Fire, as everyone's well aware, started on April nineteenth and we brought in Civil Tech Engineering to do the assessments of the watersheds that had been impacted. J Fuller ran the analysis and identified that there would be some impacts to the, primarily the Copeland, Peaceful and Brandis watersheds, Thames, Brandis watersheds. And we had Civil Tech come in and evaluate, you know, what was the impact to the individual homes. They identified thirty-six homes at risk for flooding and we have been, they've identified the vast majority, I think very few of those require barrier. Again, the risk created by Tunnel was much less significant than had been with Schultz or with pipeline. And those properties are receiving information now, some of those properties, we do not have email, we're going to need to email that out to, we held meetings with those corridors. Unfortunately, right now, we don't have the resources and to mobilize meetings corridor by corridor. There's just, you know, you're going to hear from the National Weather Service that the monsoon has already arrived and so we're working, I say we're on hyper steroids, trying to get this mitigation in place as quickly as possible. So Chris Duzza from Civil Tech, many of you will remember Chris, for all but one of those corridors, he did all the mitigation engineering off-forest, natural channel design, of course, did the on-forest engineering. So Chris Duzza, they also are doing the assessment for Wapaki Trails as well as the Timberline area. So now as well, post-pipeline, so. So wanted people to understand that, next slide please. Now I'm going to turn it over to the National Weather Service, Brian Klamowski, to provide an update on the already arrived monsoon. Brian, thank you for joining us and I just want to really again, recognize Brian and his team, they have just been phenomenal since Schultz. I think we've developed such a strong relationship with the Weather Service and this is really critical, as you'll hear later, to monitoring the flood risks and issuing the warnings and alerts and so forth. So thank you again Brian for supporting our efforts.
You bet, thank you very much Lucinda. Yeah, let's keep this quick tonight, there's a lot to talk about, if we could go on to the next slide please. The monsoon circulation is already in place, the showers we see outside right now, the rain we've seen over the past couple days are evident to that but in the atmosphere, we see that circulation has already taken hold. With this, the fire threat is rapidly decreasing but the daily threat of storms, locally heavy rain and flooding is increasing. That is, we're in a pattern now, we're working to see that daily threat of storms and flash flooding like we do during a typical monsoon, it's just a couple weeks early this year. And because of the high fire threat, we're happy to see that, but we understand the risks that come with that as well. In addition, we are expecting a pretty active monsoon this year, taking the whole monsoon season as a, as an entirety, we expect it to be above normal. We're not sure if it's going to be as active as it was last year but we're certainly preparing for an active monsoon this year, as we all should. Next slide please. There's a number of tools in place that the Weather Service has, the county and city have an awesome website, you know, which has all the information you might need. The National Weather Service on our website, we have what we call the Flagstaff Area Burn Scar Flood Risk Page. An example of it is shown on the right-hand side, there's a link on the top of our website, a headline, you can click and get directly to this webpage. On this, it shows the daily flood risk every day, so you can kind of get advanced notice of what the risk is three days in advance, it'll also show you on the graphic below, all of the warnings that are in effect. Let's talk briefly about how to get the warnings, we'll be talking about this a little bit later with the county rave alerts and other electronic alerts. But the National Weather Service of course also has our NOAA Weather Radios and the Weather Band, which is on some radios, which will alert you if there's any severe thunderstorm warnings, flash flood warnings in the area of that transmitter, which is right on Mount Eldon. Well, we, the National Weather Service also sends out wireless emergency alerts on your cell phone. Whenever we have a high-end flash flood warning, severe thunderstorm warning, it will activate on your phone. We'll chat about that a little bit later, also you can follow us on social media. All of the flash flood warnings for the Flagstaff Area Burn Scars will be on Twitter and Facebook and we'll be, of course, presenting forecast information every day on our website and on social media to provide you the information you need to be alert and to be safe this year. and on social media to provide you the information you need to be alert and to be safe this year.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Next up, uh, I want to introduce Joe Leverage. I, I, um, sorry, my camera is acting badly right now. I want to introduce Joe Leverage. Joe is uh, an engineer uh, and hydrologist uh, with J E Fuller Hydrology and Geomorphology. Many of you will remember that uh, we worked extensively with J Fuller through throughout the Schultz flooding. Uh, they did all the flood risk analysis and hydrology for Schultz. They also did that for the Slide Fire as well as the Museum Fire as well as now the Pipeline. So extensive experience locally and um, uh, they're very, very, very familiar. Uh, fortunately, we had all that modeling in place and when the fire started, uh, my first contact actually was with Joe to say rev up the models. So thank you, Joe, for your continuing partnership. We really appreciated it. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Lucinda. Yeah, let's get into it. So next slide, please. So what I want to take you through tonight is our steps for our flood risk assessment process and what some of these results are looking like today and how they may change as we go forward with um, with model refinements as more data comes available. So to start with, we um, we performed some preliminary flood modeling right off the bat. And, and this is, this is still underway, but um, but we have enough modeling completed to show you some results tonight. What this is, is we're referencing back to our Schultz Fire modeling that was completed um, from twenty-ten to twenty-sixteen to take into account some of the improvements that were done. And also we're referencing the post-tunnel flood modeling that we were done, that was done a month ago. Um, not expecting to have to re-update it for the Pipeline Fire. Also with this preliminary flood modeling is are some, are some assumptions built into our model for what the burn severity is. As many of you know, the the big driving factor in post wildfire runoff is the soil burn severity, how hot the soil was, what the fire effects on the soil were, it was and how that impacts then the amount of water and the speed at which that water and what that water carries downstream. So that modeling is underway, but uh, we have, we have some preliminary results that we're going to share with you tonight. Mitigation is the next step of this process and that is underway based on that modeling. Uh, Chris and Lucinda are going to touch on that. Our, our next um part of the process is well, it's not our, it's the U S Forest Service performs the um, the Bear Assessment. The Bear is the Burned Area Emergency Response uh, Assessment. And it is a rapid assessment of the soil burn severity. The this is, this is underway and actually um, the results of the Soil Burn Severity was just released uh, late this afternoon. And so we haven't had a chance to dig into, to put that into our modeling yet, but, but we've had a chance to review it and um, the Bear Team has graciously allowed me to, to accompany them in their field work and um, and to see the watershed myself so that we're able to um, understand what the impacts may be downstream. So once this Bear Team assessment is complete, that information then gets updated into our flood modeling. So we know whether the, the soil is burnt severely, moderately, low and how, and that, those factors then drive our, our runoff. So next slide. Okay, so let's, let's talk spatially where we are. So everybody gets a feel for um, how this, how and why this affects you. So first, let's start with the uh, you see the, the yellow line running through the middle of your screen um, from bottom left to top right. That's Highway eighty-nine. You see Campbell Silver Saddle and Brandis Roads labeled on here. The green polygon that you see that covers the east side of the peaks, that is the Schultz Fire, twenty-ten Schultz Fire. The purple polygon that you see, that's the, the Tunnel Fire. The red line on the very left side of your screen, that's the Museum Fire. So you can see that in relation. And the twenty-two Pipeline Fire, which is still continuing, but just about wrapped up here is the, the red shaded polygon. So this is important because you can see how all of these features overlap each other. Now these, the blue lines that you see with the arrows, those are just general graphical flow paths to give you an idea of how the water is translating off the mountain through the neighborhood and, and why it's going to impact certain areas. The, the short lines kind of pointing towards Campbell and Brandis, those are all pretty straightforward. Those watersheds drain straight off the mountain, down through Timberline, towards the landfill and then on towards Stony Park. The, the line on the left, that's kind of a snaking around the mountain, that originates in Weatherford Canyon, if you know the area. And Weatherford Canyon uh, was not burnt in Schultz, in the Schultz Fire. That has burned now uh, pretty severely. And so that is the upper watershed of the Government Tank watershed, which flows down, crosses eighty-nine at the Solar Field and then uh, past the north side of Old Caves Crater and into Doni Park. So that gives you spatially an idea of what we're looking at here. Next slide. So, so some quick, quick summaries. Uh, the, the Tunnel and the Pipeline Fires, we know they cover the, pretty much the whole east flank of the peaks. So our results, as you're looking as I'm going through these, these are not final, but they do indicate a significant increase in flood risk as compared to pre-pipeline fire conditions. So think Schultz Fire, or think, think watershed last year. Now we're um, with the Pipeline Fire on top of it, we're, we're expecting a significant increase in the flood risk. These model results that you're going to see tonight are being adjusted um, and updated as more data becomes available with, as it's become available with the Soil Burn Severity, but it's not um, in the model yet. Next slide. Okay, so one other thing I wanted to mention is we had to make some assumptions about our flood modeling. One of the assumptions with the Soil Burn Severity, one, one of the assumptions we made was that the entire new burn uh, burned moderately. So a moderate soil burn severity. And um, and in seeing the, the Soil Burn Severity map with the um, coming from the Bear Team, it looks like we're, we're in the right ballpark with that. So uh, that was one of the assumptions we had to make. The next is what kind of storm do we model to reflect the risk through here? So there's a series of rain gauges on the Waterline Road and in the watersheds above Timberline. Those rain gauges have given us some good data about the type of um flood events that we could expect to see, or type of rainfall events that we could expect to see that generate floods. So what you're seeing here is modeled is a two inches of rain in forty-five minutes, which has happened a number of times on the Schultz, Schultz Fire and has produced some flood events um, early on after Schultz. And it equates to about a, a twenty-five year event, which is probabilistic event. It, it's a four percent probability of happening. Which does not mean that you can't have back-to-back events. It just means that's the probability of it happening on any given day. The, what you're, we're looking at here are results and these are flood depths. So on each of these slides, you're going to see in the bottom left corner, this is the color ramp. The color ramp indicates the flooding depths. So the blue is point five feet to one, to one foot, so six inches to a foot depth of water. Uh, green is one to two feet, lighter green is two to three feet. Uh, yellowish-orange is three to four, orange is four to five and purple is greater than five. This is the max flood depth that could happen at any of these given uh, areas. What you're not seeing on here are the flood extents shallower than six inches. This is termed as sheet flow and um, and it can cover a wider extent. It's not that it's not ignore, it's not that it is ignored. It's taken into account with the flood assessments that the group is doing. Um, but it's not in the primary flow path. And so it's not uh, shown on these initial results that I'm going to show you tonight. So let's get into it. This is the Wupaki Trails, Girls Ranch Road area. The, the runoff approaches the neighborhood from the north uh, right next to Highway eighty-nine. The primary channel, as you know, flows along Highway eighty-nine to the south. And it uh, it's right on, skirts the edge of the, the neighborhood, crosses the highway and heads on down towards Girls Ranch Road and um, onto the east. Now what we're seeing with this is that there's enough burned area within that watershed that the response could be pretty severe and and, and potentially the, the improvements that were, the mitigation that was installed before with a storm like of this magnitude could, could be overtopped and we, we may have some sheet flow through the neighborhood. Um, as we work our way down um, along towards Girls Ranch Road, you can see how there's, there's some spreading of the flow um, out kind of in the, in the meadow area there uh, before it concentrates and heads to the east. Next slide.
And I think, Joe, it's important to note that if you go back to Wupaki that the, the the yellow and green there is actually the, the channel that was constructed as part of the mitigation, the vast majority of that yellow and green. And then as it comes down and below Girls Ranch, most of you that live in Girls Ranch know that we constructed the Girls Ranch uh, Road Birm, which takes then the water out to uh, the Cinder uh, Lakes and, or Cinder, yeah, the Cinder Lakes out there and it uh, uh, and that was constructed because that water prior had flowed, flowed down into Fernwood. So and back on forest there, if you go back up at the top, Sean, there, you can see there's a dark red, that's the Terminal Trench there. Come to the south a little bit there, Sean, back down right there. That's the Terminal Cl- Trench that collects the water off the Fan. That Fan is the green area to the north. And so you're going to see this in each of the corridors that was mitigated and then, and then there's a channel that takes it over to the channel that takes it down through the neighborhood. So, but as, as Joe mentioned, and this is a twenty-five year post wildfire, you know, storm. This is twenty-five year two-inch rainfall in forty-five minutes. And with the post wildfire, we will see sheet flow beyond that. Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, thanks, Lucinda. Yeah, let's move on to the next one. Okay, so moving south to uh, Brandis. Peaceful watersheds, so Brandis to Kevin's Way. The water, the, the runoff, you know, comes off the mountain. You can see, like Lucinda said, uh, the Fan area above Brandis, Terminal Trench. What we're seeing with this watershed is that um, water appears to be pretty confined to the channel, though we are having, there is quite a bit of sheet flow in here that is less than six inches. And this is an area that um, Chris Dusa and his team definitely spent a lot of time talking to residents. And so a lot of the same uh, principles apply with, with the areas that they were looking at. We are going to have more water out of this, a pretty significant increase from post tunnel, uh, which is why there's a little bit more sheet flow. Um, that's going to be happening in this area and the channel will be flowing um, potentially flowing high. As that channel, Brandis, so to follow the Brandis Channel, it's the orange line, that's the depth of the water, that's the channel that was constructed down towards eighty-nine. Brandis Channel turns at eighty-nine and heads south to the Detention Basin, south Kevin's Way. Now, the, the peaceful watershed that, that comes in south of Brandis, that, that's really a sheet flow scenario with some um, some concentrated flow, some erosion that's happening in there in different places. Um, it's going to be a real sheet flow scenario through that, that area and uh, whatever we were looking at with the Tunnel Fire, it's, it's increased for the Pipeline Fire. So this, this will see a lot of uh, sheet flow impacts. That runoff eventually gets to the, to the Detention Basins uh, before it moves south and to, south and to the east. Moving on. So let's come down to Copeland. Copeland uh, is another watershed where you see a couple of um, threads that come in from the west. And there's some confined, some, some real concentrated flow as it's moving towards the basins and towards Copeland Lane. Uh, a lot of sheet flow through this area and um, and, and the thing to think about too with these is this, this is a new burn scar. So this isn't going to be clean water. Um, this will be, this, this water is going to have sediment. It's going to have some debris in it. And so um, and so it's something, something to be cautious about with the type of runoff that's going to be um, immediately following the fire. Is that, as that runoff heads um, to the east, uh, you can see at the bottom of the, bottom right of the basin. Um, the water flows across Highway eighty-nine to the east along the channel and out to uh, the Cinder Lakes. There's an area in here, and like I said, um, like I said, our, our models are um, these are living and breathing models. We are, we are updating them as we get more information and as we um, uh, integrate new topography and things like that. So there, there are some aspects of these that are going to change a little bit. One of them, one of which uh, may be right here on Last Chance uh, road right to the east of the basin uh, through Fernwood where, where those flood results may um, may be revised a little bit due to, to the good capacity that we have in the channels along Highway eighty-nine. And that will be updated uh, soon.
Yeah, and Joe, I just wanted to add that um, when we had the thousand year rain event in eighteen, uh, although we got a tremendous amount of rainfall, you know, six inches in a fairly short period of time, that we did not see it overflow. And in fact, it, it flowed a little bit into the, the one lane, uh, the west lane there at Brandis, but it did not overflow at this area, nor did the Copeland uh, ditch that goes out to Cinder Lakes overflow in, in that event, um, which is a much, much larger event, of course, than this event now. So just so, you know, uh, that people understand what happened. That doesn't mean it can't happen, but um, and I'll come back and talk about that, what we're doing relative to those channels as well. So thanks, Joe.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, moving south, next slide. Okay, so this covers Campbell, the Paintbrush Watersheds, the uh, and the Government Tank Watershed. Now, um, Campbell and Paintbrush, North and South Paintbrush, you can see the, the fans, the Terminal trenches. And so you see each of these purple dots, the purple lines at the bottom of the fans right upstream of the neighborhood. Downstream of those, there's, there's yellow confined flow in the channel and the constructed channels. So you can see Campbell Avenue, the, the channel that's flowing along Campbell Avenue appears to contain the flow pretty well, um, though there is some overtopping upstream that's going to, that's going to sheet through the neighborhood. Uh, when we get to Paintbrush though, with this type of flow event, there, there is some overtopping and that sheet flow does cut through the neighborhood and i- is exceeding the capacity of the, the constructed. does cut through the neighborhood and is exceeding the capacity of the constructed improvements. So so this is an area that that there is, I think, some pretty significant risk in for both both widespread flooding and potentially a little deeper along Paintbrush. And let's, so right south of that is the government tank watershed. This is, this is right at the bottom of the screen. And these are these flow paths that are that are flowing right directly towards the solar field. They come down and they hit Highway eighty-nine. And and at that point, there are some pipes that take flow across Highway eighty-nine. And there's some channels that that direct at north also towards Campbell. So some of this water over tops, some of this water goes under, some of that heads to the north and it is caught in the twin berms, which are right upstream of the landfill. One of the twin berms that you can see in the very top right of your screen, the purple, where where a lot of, there's a lot of storage right there for the floodwater to protect Donnie Park. Now, the the interesting part of government tank, government tank has the biggest swath of watershed that was not burnt in Schultz that is burned now. And and so relative to Schultz, what was experienced in the Schultz flooding, government tank is going to be more responsive than that, most likely. What's, what's part of this picture with the government tank watershed is at the bottom right of the screen, the flow that's heading down and across Landfill Road, that that heads straight to Donnie Park, which move to the next slide. That flow comes in from the top left towards Moonbeam and works its way through Donnie Park towards Yancey. The the challenge with Donnie Park is that it has a hard time draining. So there's, the water accumulates in the area down towards Yancey. And if you get a, if you get a storm with enough volume of rainfall in it, there's potential that 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 water can just pool pond and and doesn't really have an outlet down at the bottom. So so this is another area that mitigation will be be looking into. So so that kind of gives you an overview of the modeling, where we're at, where we're going with it. And and like I said, it's a, it's a, it's a constant process and we'll be continuing to update it as we have more information from the team.
Thank you, Joe. I, what I want to do is go back, go back, Sean, a couple of slides back to the Campbell. I think it's those, just this slide. And what I wanted you to speak to, Joe, that we've talked about a great deal is that the modeling that you're seeing in terms of the on Forest measures, it certainly identifies and you can see where those fans are accumulating water. It, it does model that that configuration of the ground is there, that they did put that, those dimensions in to the modeling. But what it's not doing is there's no real consideration for infiltration on those restored alluvial fans. And and they were really initially constructed to to adapt, to reduce the sediment so that the mitigation downstream could function, because otherwise it would have just filled up with sediment. And there would have been no value to downstream mitigation. And so, but what we've actually seen since the construction and the events that we've had is that a pretty significant amount of infiltration takes place. Now, depending upon how much sediment comes down off the mountain, that could now be influenced. But Campbell, for example, has an extensive set of alluvial fan repairs and or restoration, I should say. And so this is very conservative for those watersheds that have been mitigated. This is a very conservative set of modeling that's that's taking place. You can also see to the right hand of the screen here that we constructed two twin berms, we call them the twins, that are between the East Campbell on on Forest, between East, the end of East Campbell and Landfill Road. And when, after we constructed those, as well as some some birmingham and things that were done downstream of Landfill Road before it gets to that northern flow there, the flow coming mostly out of Campbell and some northern flow from government tank, that's had a significant impact in reducing impacts. Those in Donnie Park know that they got flooded very early on in the process. And once we were able to get onto Forest and get those constructed, that had a, had a big impact, even even before we got the on Forest measures done. So but with the on Forest measures, we've had, again, very, very little water. In fact, I don't think that waters flowed down that channel that I'm aware of since we had on Forest. So again, we're seeing a heighten because of the increased, you know, impact to the soils and everything, we're seeing heightened flows. Now, with government tank, as Joe indicated, very little of that, a small percentage of that burned in Schultz. And so we, there was some flooding in those areas. People will remember that there were some impacts. They medi, they they mediated themselves fairly quickly because, again, the upper steep slopes had not burned. Unfortunately, they have burned now and they have burned severely. And so now you're seeing this southern flow, which we never saw before with with the, now with this impact to government tank watershed. Now that I want to, very important to understand that the watershed to the south of this Offenhouser, it is, was not, I think only four percent burned in Schultz and none of it burned during pipeline. So if if that, if there's any flooding in that corridor, that Offenhouser corridor, which comes in at McCann at the corner of Silver Saddle and eighty-nine, it won't have anything to do with this fire because it didn't affect that watershed. So so that's important to understand and why you're not seeing that in the modeling here. But we do now see the ponding down there southeast of Cromer School, kind of that Stardust Yancey area that was shown before. So and we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit later. So all right, Joe, anything else that you want to share with the, with the, with the community tonight?
Oh, that covers it. Thank you, Lucinda.
Great, thank you. So next I want to talk about what's been underway. Tremendous amount of effort has been underway. Go ahead to the next slide. So unfortunately, the the terminal trench at Wapaki Trails and the burned during the tunnel fire, that's the end of the fan, there's a terminal trench that collects the water and moves it to the trench, the channel that goes through the neighborhood, that's a terminal trench. That that structure, which was created out of logs, burned during the tunnel fire. Tiffany Construction has been out there the last couple of days, have a little bit more to finish up tomorrow. They will have completed those repairs and restored the capacity of that that terminal trench. And so, so that, that's in, that'll be in good shape here to respond. And with Campbell, again, the Campbell trench, it burned as well during pipeline fire. And we're hoping, we're working very closely with the Forest Service, they've been very cooperative. They understand the criticality of these, these measures functioning. And the plan is for for Tiffany to be able to start on that terminal trench tomorrow morning or tomorrow afternoon, sometime tomorrow. Fortunately, neither one of the Paintbrush nor Siesta Paintbrush nor Brandis burned. And so the other terminal trenches are are in good shape. We've had, you've probably seen Morning Dew out, they have been out, the Landscape Company clearing out debris in some small scale sediment from the channels. We've also had Rummels been out this week clearing sediment from the channel along eighty-nine as well as some debris within the channel on Brandis, or I should say sediment. And then Tiffany has also got a crew that has but will be removing some of the, the the material that was within the channel of Brandis, removing that. And 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 repairing a small section that had been, that was, that's been damaged and and needed to be repaired. So the Brandis Channel and their, their deepening in that one section where that, that, that that matting that that was, that was impacted in eighteen and has gotten worse. They're deepening that channel as well. So that's underway and should be completed very soon. The further up, the what we called the rundown structures, some of those burned as well, they're not as critical, but they will be replaced as well at some point as well. And their capacity restored. We're also seeking approval right now from the Forest Service to place concrete barriers between Landfill Road and and Donnie Park. And so if you, if you think about that southern flow that's now coming out of the government tank watershed that flows to the south, thank you, Sean. As you can see here, a little bit to the north there is Landfill Road, there's a, I think that's one of the pipeline roads there. You can see these red, these red lines. We're going to place barrier there. Three sets of three, you know, you can see the links and so forth. And we're working to get permission to get that done. Again, this is important work. This will slow down the water, allow the water to soak in behind those barriers and slow down the water, that's all cinder. And hopefully it will, you know, soak in and reduce the volume of water and slow down the volume of water that's headed to that area within Donnie Park that that shows that ponding. So all right, next, next slide. So next, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Dusa. And Chris Dusa, we've we have identified three areas within the Timberline, Fernwood, Wapaki Trails, Donnie Park area, and three different engineering firms have been are working in each of those areas to identify what mitigation is needed for homes and businesses. And Chris Dusa and his team, again, Chris did all the engineering, almost all except one of the, the one of the downstream channels, all the off forest mitigation engineering downstream of the forest for Schultz. So he's extremely familiar with all these measures that were installed and the flood paths and the hydrology. And has been a tremendous partner since 2010. So I'm going to go ahead and Chris will walk through what this process is. But what Chris is doing for the area, he's, he's responsible for the Timberline and Wapaki Trails area. And then we have another engineer who's evaluated the Fernwood Girls Ranch area down to, down to Campbell on the east side of eighty-nine. And then we have another engineer that's evaluated the government tank area, Johnson Ranch, and then into Donnie Park. So and they're all taking a similar approach that that Chris is identifying and going to walk us through tonight. Thank you, Chris.
All right, thank you, Lucinda. Next slide, please. Okay, so a little bit about the flood assessments and and what we mean by conducting these flood assessments. As many of you may recall, after the tunnel fire, we were out in the field and we met with quite a bit of homeowners out in the field, looking at the property, sharing the maps that Joe had developed after the tunnel fire and talked to people basically about the the risk for flooding after the tunnel fire. So you know, that was pre-pipeline fire. So now that we've had the pipeline fire, our scope of work has expanded because we were really concentrated more on the central watersheds of Peaceful and Campbell, or I'm sorry, Copeland, those areas for the assessments that we did with the tunnel fire, because those were the watersheds that the modeling had predicted that we would see the most impact from the tunnel fire. Now with the pipeline fire, things have obviously changed where some of the, some of the watersheds, which weren't burned as part of the the tunnel fire, have now burned. And those watershed areas include those that impact the Wapaki Trails area, the South Paintbrush area, and as Joe and Lucinda had mentioned, you know, the Government Canyon area. So what we've now done is expanded our scope of work to look at residential properties in those areas. And instead of going out and meeting with each individual property owner, we just simply didn't have time for that. We're doing what we're calling paper assessments. And the paper assessments are basically, we're, we're taking that modeling that you saw that Joe had completed with the color coding in those models that represents various flow depths. So those are showing us the areas that are in the primary flow pass and that are most likely to be inundated by the modeled storm. So based on Joe's modeling and based on some aerial mapping, some LiDAR data, topographic mapping, and some recent aerial imagery, we're putting together assessments that aren't necessarily for individual properties, but they cover a large area. So for example, the Wapaki Trails area is now, instead of having, you know, twenty or thirty different maps for each individual property, we have two maps that shows quite a few properties on those maps. Same thing for Paintbrush. Instead of having, you know, a hundred individual maps, we have, we have seven or eight sheets that now covers that area. So that's what we mean by paper assessments. So as Lucinda mentioned, we have three engineering firms working in the area. Civil Tech, my firm, is working on the Wapaki Trails area, Brandis, which we had done during the tunnel fire, Copeland, Campbell, North and South Paintbrush. And then another firm is working on the Girls Ranch Road in the Fernwood area. And another firm, again, working on Government Canyon and the Donnie Park area. So a couple of slides in the presentation, I'll show you what these, what these paper assessments look like. And they're, they're color coded mitigation maps and the mitigation involves sandbag, sandbags and concrete barriers, those Jersey barriers that that you probably still see some remnants of from the Schultz fire. So those, those property owners that we had done those individual assessments for, based on the tunnel fire, we have those individual property owner maps and and we do, we have reached out to those property owners by email and we've given them copies of those maps. If we talk to you out in the field and you haven't received those maps yet, it's probably because we, we don't have a way of getting in touch with you by email. So if if we did talk to you out in the field and you haven't received your map yet to date, please reach out to the county on the, on the hotline number, which will be on one of the following slides and get your email address to us so we can send those maps out to you.
Actually, Chris, the best way to communicate with us is through the Pipeline Fire Flood mitigation email and you'll, that will come up later. If you'll email us with your email, then we will add it to the list. And then that's being provided to the engineers to send directly to you the maps that show whether or not your property is recommended for mitigation. And if so, what you need to do to mitigate your home. So and again, we're only mitigating homes, we aren't mitigating other structures. We have very limited resources and very limited time based upon, you know, the Weather Service and what's happening with the monsoon. So it's very important that the mitigation sandbags be utilized for primary homes. If you need barrier, we will contact you directly. And again, if you go on and will, all these maps will also be posted on the pipeline website as well. So and again, we'll have all those links later. And if you identify that, if you're identified for barrier and we do not have your contact information, you have not reached out, then please email us. The, the call center can get overwhelmed fairly quickly. And so it's important that the most efficient way, we have to do everything extremely rapidly right now with with monsoon having already started. Thanks, Chris.
Okay, thanks, Lucinda. Next slide, please. So, so I mentioned the two forms of mitigation that we're looking for in the short term here involves concrete barriers. So, so I mentioned the two forms of mitigation that we're looking for in the short term here involves concrete barriers and it also involves sandbags. So I want to walk you through how we determine, um, whether or not we will use concrete barriers or sandbags on individual properties. So based on, again, on the modeling that, that Joe has done. You saw maps earlier that predict or show us the depth of flow. What you didn't see is there's, um, also a component of that model that predict, that predicts the velocity of flow. Um, that comes down through there. And then there's a third set of maps that, that takes the depth at times velocity, and that's really the basis of what we're looking at for flood risk. So if your particular, um, residential structure is in an area that meets a certain threshold, um, that we've established. We're going to be recommending, uh, the concrete barrier, uh, for, in those instances. If it's close to that threshold, um, we're encouraging the engineers working on it to use their, their best judgment. Um, and look at these individual properties, but if it's below a, a certain threshold. Then we'll be recommending sandbags for those, um, for those properties or those areas. So one thing to keep in mind that. If, if you are, um, have a property where we're recommending concrete barriers and you do want those barriers. You will need to execute what's called a cooperator agreement. And the cooperator agreement is a, is a simple form that, that's signed by the county and the property owner that essentially gives the, the county. Uh, and their contractor permission to go onto your property. And, uh, install those barriers on your property. So without that cooperator agreement, they can't, they can't do the installation. So that's important. Um, one of the other things that, that we'll need to know, or the contractor will need to know, um, is the location of your septic field, uh, your septic tank and your leach field. Um, obviously we don't want to damage the, the septic tank or the leach field with these barriers. So it will be important, um, for you to point out, uh, where those facilities are. Okay. So the barrier placement, um, is determined by the flood risk, um, assessment and standard that we've set. It's the same standard that's being applied in all areas from Wapaki Trails all the way down through Doni Park. Okay. And again, as, as Lucinda had mentioned, um. If you've had barrier on your property with the Schultz fire and maybe it's been removed. Um, please contact us and let us know, um, let us know. It doesn't necessarily mean that, that you'll get barrier again. Um, but we just want to make sure that we've taken a close look at that property and, and we feel like we're doing the most appropriate mitigation on that property. Uh, next slide, please. Okay. So this slide is, um, is a representation of what these, these paper assessments, uh, look like. So again, these, these maps will be posted on the county's website. So individual homeowners can, can get them. They'll be in a PDF format. So you can get them and identify your property. But you see, as Lucinda mentioned, what we're really looking at is, is primary structures or the residences. And so what these maps will show is they'll be color coded and what you'll see on this map in the blue. Is, um, a sandbag barrier and then in the red would be the Jersey barrier or the concrete barrier, uh, around the one house. So what these maps will identify is in a approximate location where we're recommending the placement, um, of this mitigation. And in the case of a, of a Jersey barrier, we're identifying how many linear feet of barrier that you will need. That'll help you and that'll help the contractor, um, when they mobilize to the property of needing, needing to know how much barrier they need to bring to your property. Um, and, and place obviously on your property. Again, with the sandbags. You'll see a recommendation for the height of the sandbags, the height of the sandbags that we're recommending is based on the depth of flow that you're seeing from Joe's modeling. And so we're, we've provided a couple of details on those maps that you see on the right side of the slide. Uh, where you have a, a three stack, we call it, what with the three, two, one stack of sandbags and a four stack, a four, three, two, one. One being about, uh, a foot and a half high, the other being about two, um, about two feet high. So we also have shown on the maps, the approximate number of sandbags that you will need, um, to construct these structures as recommended as, and. Uh, and shown on your properties. So again. These maps will be available, uh, through the county's website. There'll be one for Wapaki Trails. They'll probably, uh, I believe there'll be one that'll cover the Girls Ranch Fernwood area. There'll be, um, one for the Government Canyon area, and then there'll also be one for the Doni Park area. Again, the interior watersheds that we looked at, um, with the tunnel fire for Peaceful and Copland, those areas. We did those individual lot maps. Um, again, this, that predated the pipeline fire. So I, I think many people have already received those, but again, as Lucinda had mentioned, if you haven't received those, please reach out. Uh, so that we can make sure we can get those maps to you. Okay, next slide.
All right. Great. Thank you, Chris. And so again, those maps, if we have your email. So if you can email us your, your address, name. Email, you know, your email address, your name, your ad, your physical address. If you have a mailing address where you, you receive mail, you may be a property owner. This is not a, is not your first, you may have a second, this may be a second home. You know, make sure that we have that and your cell phone number in case we need to contact you about securing barrier. Uh, the, the district's going to make every effort to get the barrier that's required. To be placed and we're reaching out throughout. Southwest right now to secure as much barrier as possible. And, and to be able to get those placed. Now a couple of other things I want to cover. And you all that were here during Schultz, you'll remember how important this was. Number one, we only mitigate homes. And, and it's really important that those sandbag walls be very close to the home. And the reason for that is that we want the sheet flow to flow around. Legally, you are responsible for where the water enters your property. Where it leaves your property and the character of the water as it leaves. Meaning you can't change it. And so a lot of people say, well, I want to put sandbags on my property line. That is not, uh, frankly, it's not, one, it's not legal. Uh, through court cases, it's been identified, um, and. On the website is a very good article. That describes, you know, the responsibility of the property owner when you're, when you're placing this mitigation. And I'm going to turn it over to Ray Garcia here in a moment. But we really need everyone to mobilize their friends, their families. Church groups, whoever you can help you to mobilize your mitigation. We've mobilized all the resources we can. And unfortunately. It's much more challenging to get resources today. Than it was frankly back in, in 10 and 11. Uh, getting the Conservation Corps crews, we've got. Uh, we're going to be ranging between 15 and 20 available to work with us. Fortunately, we've been able to bring in. Six of the, uh, Department of, of Fire Management, Forestry and Fire Management, Department of Corrections crews that are. Phenomenal in producing sandbags. But, but we've got six of those crews. We're trying to bring in more. But, you know, it's a real challenge to get. The number of bags that we need to have. We're looking at probably needing upwards to half a million to a million sandbags. Produced in a very short period of time. So we, and placement, if we take those resources to place bags. Then we can't make bags. And so we really need people to get out to the sites. Ray will give you the information. Get your bags made, get your bags placed. Again, use your friends, family. Really looking neighbor to neighbor like you did during Schultz. There was so much support. Provided neighbor to neighbor. Cause, cause not every home needs mitigation, particularly now because we. Did the mini, the major mitigation, but. There are homes still at risk and, and anything people can do to help each other. We're also working with United Way to rally volunteers. So if you can get groups out to help volunteer again from your social groups. Please, please, we need all the help we can get right now. And Ray Garcia is our de- deputy director now at Kocaneo County Public Works. Uh. Ray was responsible for the tunnel recovery effort. Many of you in that area that lost homes. Are familiar with Ray. He worked, uh, extensively to. Get those homes, uh, cleaned up and, uh, it's just done a tremendous job. Um. And, uh, he's now taking on overseeing the production of sandbags as well as. Setting up and, and maintaining those sandbag stations. So Ray, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Lucinda. Uh, next slide, please, Sean. Okay, um, these are the current sites that we have established for, uh, both self-serve sandbags as well as the sandbags that we are. Uh, building here at the Commerce, uh, Public Works facility and delivering out to the Copeland Detention Basin. The only change you'll see on this is that we have to shut down the Silver Saddle Store site, uh, tomorrow. Um, their construction is going to begun, been, begin about a month and a half early, which is kind of unbelievable, but it is. Um, so we're going to move that site, um, beginning tomorrow. Um, however, there'll be plenty of other sites that we did establish and I just, uh, got those locked in, um, this evening. And, uh, this, these slides will be, uh, available on the county website after this, uh, presentation. And this meeting and then, uh. As a reminder, we also have, um, the sandbag maps will be updated as we get the sites, um, established tomorrow. And, um, possibly some more early next week. Those, uh, sandbag maps will be on the county website as well. Uh, the additional sites we're establishing, uh, tomorrow will be on the, uh, south side of Cromer School. We'll have three stations set up there. Uh, east of Cromer School, there's a big field, um, on Silver Saddle Road and we'll have three stations there as well. And then the, the additional stations we're waiting approval on. Um, one will be on Silver Saddle Road i- if we get the approval, um, and that'll be on the Caves Crater. Um, parking lot. And then two more on the Stardust, uh, Road, um, one off of Mercury and one off of, um. Gemini. So, um, those maps will be updated as we get those sites established. Next slide, please.
And Ray, those are all self-fill. And as we, as we make bags, we're delivering them to Copeland Detention, but. Um, we'll, we'll, you know, if we can expand our production, they may go out to other sites as well, but all those. Will have the self-fill materials, sandbags, cinder. And we've got cone devices and things there to help make the bags.
Yes, that's, that's correct. Thank you. Um. So we've made approximately 64,000 sandbags that have been put out at the Copeland site. Um, most of those are probably already gone. Uh, we had two truckloads out there this evening and my, my guess is they're gone already. Which is fine. That's what they're, what they're there for. Um, like Lucinda said, they're being produced here at the Commerce site, the Public Works site. Uh, there's on the Conservation Corps, the Conservation Experience, um, DFFM has additional crews coming in. Uh, along with the Department of Corrections. At this point, we are averaging about 7,000 sandbags a day. We anticipate upping that to about 10,000 over the next few weeks, um, without any issues, uh, being lightning. You know, slowing our production down or rain, um, or other things, uh, such as, such as those, I, um, events that could slow us down. Um, like Lucinda said, you know, if we pull these resources away from making sandbags to go and place them. Um, then that's less sandbags we can make for the public. So we're trying to, to balance that out. Um, we are very fortunate, um, to be working with Tiffany Construction. Uh, they are both establishing our, our sandbag sites, our self-serve sites. As well as, uh, delivering all the sandbags that we make here at Commerce out to Copeland. So they're doing a fantastic job, um. Helping us stay ahead of the power curve, at least for now. Um. This Saturday, we're having a, uh, sandbag event through United Way of Northern Arizona. They are collecting volunteers to, um, build sandbags. All 12 of the sites that we anticipate having up by tomorrow. Will have, um, volunteers, uh, to build sandbags. We're very fortunate in that many of the firefighters, well, 100 to 150 of the firefighters that are out there fighting the fires right now, the Haywire Fire. And the pipeline fire, um, that have a day off on Saturday have volunteered to come in and make sandbags. So. We should have, um, all twice, 12 sites full of firefighters making sandbags in the morning on Saturday. We also have, uh, regular citizens here from Flagstaff in the county volunteering as well. And so we should, we anticipate getting quite a few sandbags made, um, on Saturday. Uh, in addition to that, we have identified, or the, the engineers have identified two homes and from the tunnel fire. Um, that were high risk and they are, have also been further identified as being elderly or disabled. We're going to have crews out there to emplace the sandbags at their home. Uh, their homes. So we'll, we'll get two of those homes done this weekend. Next slide, please. So as Lucinda stated, you know, the, the sandbags are intended solely for primary residences and, uh, in my driving around and visiting with the, the folks out in Timberline Fernwood area. Um, with Putki, et cetera. It appears that people are really, uh, trying to do the right thing and just protect their homes and. And, um, there's a lot of, uh, community support out there, a lot of people helping each other. Uh, Flagstaff firefighters, Summit firefighters were out there yesterday. At the Copeland site, just volun- just jumped in, just started loading people's trucks and trailers up just, uh, because they wanted to help. So. A lot of community support out there. It's really good things to see. Um, a couple of reminders here that we, nor Tiffany can load, um, personal vehicles or trailers with, uh, sandbags with the forklifts. Uh, due to liability reasons and we fielded numerous questions in regard to that. Um, we can't deliver sandbags to homeowners other than the elderly and the disabled. Um, for obvious reasons, we'll take care of those folks as best we can. And we have a list of those that have come into the call center and, um, we will be, uh. Assisting those as much as possible. Um, and again, that'll be with mostly with volunteers. Um, we do see a lot of neighbors helping each other out. So it's a great, um, great community effort there. Next slide, please. And here's a few pictures of the folks working hard, I believe, during the museum. Uh, volunteer efforts and we hope to do the same, um, here, uh, with, uh. Pipeline tunnel fire flood mitigation. Um, that's all I have for this evening. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Ray. And again. If you have either groups or you want to go personally volunteer, or you can pull together. Friends and neighbors, family members that want to volunteer. We're working through United Way. Please go to the United Way Volunteer Hub. The link is shown here. You sign up there and then we work very closely with them. To mobilize the volunteers to assist, whether it's placing bags or producing bags. So again, we can use. All the help we can get. We need every resource, uh, available. All right. Go to the next slide, please. So now going to turn it over to Mike Lopker. Mike Lopker was our. Uh, retired with us about two years ago, was at Public Works and, uh. Has come back to assist the last couple of years with. With museum and now is assisting with this and he's going to walk through. Uh, the flood monitoring system. Want to, want to say, we've been monitoring. Uh, all the gauges on Schultz since they were installed back in that 2010 to 2012. Timeframe and, um. It's been pretty quiet out there except for the 2018 event. And so, but we've now reestablished, um. A, a, a whole threshold protocol and Mike's going to walk you through all that. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Lucinda. Um, for some reason I'm not seeing, uh, myself on the screen, but I'm going to assume that, uh. Everyone can, uh, hear and or, uh, see me. Um. So I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about our, uh, flood director program and, and the monitoring that we do during storms. This has been ongoing since about, uh, 2011 and we've developed it, uh, since that time, since, uh, the first Schultz, uh, flood. Um. Uh, the, uh, Sean, could we have the next slide, please? Thank you. So, um. We're currently assessing the status of our, uh, flood area rain gauges. Uh, there's nine rain gauges in the Schultz area and, uh, more over on the museum side. Unfortunately, four of our Schultz gauges were affected by the, uh, pipeline fire. However, our engineering firm, J E Fuller, has been up there yesterday. Uh, and today, and, uh, while this slide says four gauges are currently offline. Um, two of them have been repaired as of today and we're expecting the other two to be repaired tomorrow. To have them all back and operational. So, uh, that's good news. They are a valuable, uh, tool for us. To determine what's really happening in each of the watershed areas. So we have two, uh, flood director, uh, protocols. One covers the museum. Area that flows into, uh, downtown. We're calling it the museum and Schultz Creek area now. And, uh, then there's the Schultz, uh, pipeline, uh, flood, uh, director area. So incidentally, there is a flood director on right now. If you haven't looked outside, it's raining and someone is, uh, monitoring those gauges. To take the actions that I'm going to talk about in a lit- in just a few moments. Um, we have established rain gauge alert thresholds. Um, over time, the last 10 years. Over time, the last ten years, they'd been raised as we observed the activity and we saw the forest rebuild. But with current activity with the pipeline fire, those thresholds have been taken to a a different lower level. You can see the website in the bottom of this slide, and you can go and observe that map that is in the top of the screen. That shows the freeway and eighty nine and the mountain area and those blue squares with numbers in them and the green square. Those are indicative of where the rain gauges are and what they are reading as of a past storm. The other picture on this slide is one of our engineers, Corey Hilton from J E Fuller. And that's him either yesterday or today repairing one of those rain gauges that was damaged by the by the pipeline fire. Next slide, please. Now, as it was said at the beginning, we're to the tonight's meeting is not about the museum flood area. But I want to share that we learned a lot with the museum flood area monitoring. And the museum flood area alert thresholds will remain the same for this year. You can find more information at the website that's reflected on this screen. And I will briefly mention, if you go to the bottom of the graphic to the number one, number one threshold. At zero point two five inches of rain, we take certain actions. We actually send field staff to the affected areas and ask them to give us their observations and to phone them in to the Flood Director. And help us to understand the size of the debris, the amount of water, what kind of debris is coming downstream. And that's very helpful for us to direct our resources. So we get onsite reports, and then the Flood Director will share that information with various people and agencies. At threshold number two, zero point four oh inches of rain enough in fifteen minutes. There are different actions that are taken. The Flood Director will notify the emergency. Emergency Coordinator for Coconino County. And that person will then put out a rave alerts to those people who have signed up for rave alerts in specific areas. Now, in museum, that's for the Mount Eldon Estates area only, because that's where the flood or any flood water that's coming out of the mountains will reach first. And so we're working to give those folks first notification of what's impending. And then there's threshold number three, zero point seven five inches of rain in fifteen minutes. And the entire museum flood area will then be notified of impending flooding. So those are our thresholds. They're they were established last year. They remain the same for this year. And I'd like to add that just recently, there was a siren or sirens installed in the museum flood area. And those sirens will also provide audible and verbal alerts as to the same message that's being texted. So they were installed last Friday, and we're hoping they provide folks with valuable information to help them make decisions about. Making sure you know where your children are, make sure you know where your animals are and shelter in place. Next slide, please. Thank you. So Flood Directors for each of the flood areas, both flood areas are on duty throughout the monsoon season. Again, there's somebody on tonight. And if you've been in the area very long, you know that it doesn't just rain during the day. So they're they're on all the time as weather is passing through. I suspect they probably pray for for good weather so they can get some sleep occasionally. When a Flood Director sees that a rain gauge tips at zero point one inches in fifteen seconds, they need to stop what they're doing. And get to a secure area so that they can monitor the weather, monitor the radar, and monitor the rain gauges. They receive text alerts when the gauges receive receive or exceed the designated thresholds that I mentioned in the last slide. And we also mobilize observers when the thresholds are are reached. Those observer reports are fundamental to knowing exactly what's happening in different areas. As important as anything else, we're communicating with the National Weather Service through a dedicated phone line and a chat line. And so as the storm is progressing, they will give us up to the minute information about what they expect, if it'll get a little more serious, have a little more water. Or when it will taper off so that we can take a break. And in addition to that, we will direct emergency management to issue emergent notifications to the public. And or to notify the appropriate agencies, fire, police, or road maintenance to. Attend the scene and and resolve issues or make plans to resolve those issues as they happen. Next slide, please. Thank you. So for the Schultz Pipeline Flood Area, we've established the same thresholds as we did with the museum flood area. So once again, the Flood Director will go on alert at zero point one zero inches of rain in fifteen minutes. And when we reach zero point two five inches of rain in fifteen minutes, we will start to notify other folks, emergency operations, county officials. And we will also activate people to go to the scene and provide firsthand reports of what's happening. At that point, no emergency notification alerts are sent. We see a number of storms that come through and don't reach the other threshold levels, and so we try not to overly exercise folks when when these things are happening. However, if we get additional rain and it reaches number two, zero point four zero inches of rain in fifteen minutes. Then we will notify or make emergency notification alerts, emergency operations will. And in this case, it will be only to Timberline, Wupaki Trails, and Fernwood Areas. And a text message will be sent to the cell phones registered to addresses in this area through the emergency notification database. This information will also be posted on county so social media sites. If the rain reaches an additional level, number three, if there's enough rain that we hit zero point seven five inches of rain in fifteen minutes. Then additional areas are notified. We will notify the entire Schultz Pipeline Flood Area, Timberline, Wupaki Trails, Fernwood, and Doni Park. Again, a text message with that information will be sent. It it's really similar to an Amber Alert. And we sent to those cell phones that are registered to an address in these areas throughout the emergency notification database. The alert will be also be posted to county social media sites. If I can leave you with two thoughts, it's number one, someone is on duty all the time watching this. And number two, please, please sign up for Coconino County Emergency Notifications.
Okay, great. We're going to move on to Wes Deason, who's our Director of County Emergency Management. And he's going to talk a little bit more about this, the emergency notification system and and the actual. Software is called Rave, the company, but it's really the the county's emergency notification system. So Wes?
Thank you very much, Lucinda. Good evening, everyone. Next slide, please. So Mike gave a real great intro there. Thank you for that. The way that the but one of the best ways that we can reach out to all of you, citizens, with quick, precise, specific information. Is through our emergency notification systems. Lucinda is correct, Rave is the product that we currently contract with. We've had great luck with them. We have great interaction with them. They're very responsive. Their system is capable of sending an enormous number of messages in a very small time. Tens of thousands in a matter of a couple of seconds. Very effective system. Rave is targeted. It is targeted to your physical location. It is a system that you register yourself into. You can opt into it. We do not register you. It's easy. It is free, and it is one hundred percent confidential. We don't have the information about who is registered in the system. Rave maintains that, and they maintain one hundred percent confidentiality with that. If you go to coconino dot ez dot gov slash Rick, excuse me, ready? You can find a sign up there, get registered. Very important. Just so you kind of understand the mechanics, if, for example, your home happens to be in one of the areas that's been referenced tonight. By our by our hydraulics experts and flash flood is impending. We will notify your your property. We will notify your area. Let's say, for example, you're in Phoenix, you'll get the notification on your cellphone because it's tied to your residential address. Very important, very fast system. We utilize it for the entire Ready, Set, Go program. We take the lead from the Coconino County Sheriff's Department for evacuations. And we take the lead for on flooding from the Flood Control District and our engineers and hydrologists. So please sign up for it. Very, very important. The second system that we use, we affectionately call IPOS, Integrated Public Alert and Warning System. This system is not owned by the county or contracted. This system is maintained and operated by FEMA. It's a national system. And it is somewhat different in how it applies and delivers messages. And shortly in the next slide, I'll explain that a little bit further because we have a lot of questions coming from you, the public about. You know, I see the fire right there on the mountain, but I didn't receive a notification. We'll explain that to you here in the next slide. We also serve as a pass through. Rave serves as a pass through of a lot of the National Weather Service flood warnings that come across the system. That's a an automatic integration when the National Weather Service determines the need to issue one of their flood warnings. That is automatically loaded through our rave system and delivered out to you, the citizens. We don't have to do anything with that. It's a seamless process, makes it quick, makes it fast, and ensures accuracy. The current the current messaging that you're going to see, the planned messaging that you're going to see, the the scripted messages that we already have built and constructed in the system and standing by. All, make sure you understand, we are looking for you to shelter in place. We do not want you to venture out into hazardous areas, so shelter in place is the message. Really, really important, when you receive a rave message, be it about flooding, fires, anything else, please read the message carefully. There will be instructions. There will be information. There will be guidance in the message, in the text, in the voice message, in the email. Giving you really clear and concise information to help you make quick decisions. So please read the messages and pay attention to the details. Next slide, please. So one of the key questions is, why don't I get notifications? You know, following every major event, we get many, many of these calls. And we're trying to help the public understand how these two systems work together. And how that can create a little bit of confusion. So in this illustration, the yellow polygon that you see in front of you would be a product of Rave, our system. We drew that polygon. We picked that specific area. We picked the residences in that area specifically. And we are delivering messages to those residents. That is a life safety issue. That is the intent of this system is life safety. We've identified a threat to that polygon, and we're delivering messaging. IPOS is a much less discriminating system. IPOS does not work off of addresses. It does not work off of your cellphone. It works off of cellphone towers. We pick an area, let's say this yellow polygon. And if there is a cell tower in the polygon or very close, as is indicated by the center of the blue mark here. That cell tower will pick up our message. And it will broadcast it to all of the cell phones in range of that particular tower at that time. Now you'll see, close to two thirds of that blue shaded area is not in the rave area. So if you live, let's say, right below where it says Campbell at the bottom, if you live outside that yellow, you're not going to receive the message. You're not in an imminent threat. If you live just above the yellow polygon, you may get the message because of that tower location. And you may not be in an in an imminent threat. The reason we use IPOS is because especially here in Flagstaff, we have a lot of visitors, a lot of campers, a lot of people in the forests. Many of them are not registered in our system. They came from other places, the valley, other states. They're visiting us. IPOS, excuse me, yeah, IPOS does not require a registration. But we want to get out to all of those people camping in the forest, staying in the forest. Hey, there's a problem, and try to evacuate them. During the most recent tunnel fires and the pipeline fire and the haywire fire, that was critical. We had a lot of area that was national forest. Lot of people camping out there recreating. IPOS is the best tool for that. So please understand, just because you know that there's a fire, you see the flames, right? They're close to your house. They're maybe climbing up the mountain behind your house. If you're not in threat, we will not be sending you a message. Your best option then is to really go to social media or public affairs, look for the information that's being disseminated. We want you to be informed. But we do not want to over message. We want to keep these for life safety issues. My last point, as we move into the pipeline Schultz events that have been talked about here tonight. We are going to be messaging very conservatively, and by that I mean we have developed a very large polygon. As we learn more about how these watersheds react, as we learn more about where the flows come, as we look at storms, there's a lot of factors that go into it. We may refine our messaging in the initial stages. Some of you may get messages and you may not see water flows. We're really trying to exercise caution. I won't say over notify, but that's kind of what we're talking about. We want to make sure we catch everybody. If we catch a few extras. Just call it a safety measure that that we are willing to to take on at this point. As our response and as our data grows and as our hydrologist work, we can refine our polygons and get better at it, as has happened with the museum messaging systems. But for now, we're going to be very conservative how we deliver so we can get to as many of you as we can. Thank you. That's all I have for you tonight. Lucinda, I'll turn it back to you.
Great, thank you, Wes. And Wes, thank you. Your team has been just tremendous in managing, working with the sheriff, obviously, very closely. And in managing all the notifications for the fires and and other emergencies that we've had. So thank you for all your work. All right, next slide. Brian wants to touch on his, the National Weather Service warnings as well.
You bet. Wes, that was absolutely outstanding, and it, you know, kind of goes to show that there are multiple layers of alerting to ensure. That everybody gets the notifications when flash flooding is occurring here. So the National Weather Service is a part of our mission. Of course, we issue severe thunderstorm warnings, flash flood warnings within certain polygons, within certain areas, when our meteorologists detect the hazard. As a part of that, of course, we're working very closely with the county and the Flood Directors to issue the warnings and alerts that will be coming your way. Now, the National Weather Service flash flood warnings will be seen, of course, in our social media. You'll see it. Also on your cell phones as a wireless emergency alert. This is something that will pop up on your phone if your phone is within the polygon that we are issuing the warning for. If your phone is outside that area, you will not receive this alert from the National Weather Service. One key little concept here is people that are, let's say, traveling through the area from another location. They don't have an address in the Doni Park area, but they're traveling through on their way through. If their cellphone is within this area we're warning for, as we issue the warning, it will. Um as we issue the warning, it will appear on their cellphone as this emergency alert. Um I'm not gonna spend too much time on this, but uh if you see an alert like this, just like Lucinda, just like Wes said. Go to social media, go to your known location of emergency information for this hazard. Find out the details and take the action which is needed. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate that. And I and I believe you have issued. Uh uh an advisory over the next couple of days. Is that correct, Brian?
Um there is an enhanced threat of uh flash flooding uh over the next couple of days. No specific warnings or advisories have been issued at this time.
Okay.
But um yeah, we need to uh stay tuned the next couple of days.
Great. Thank you, Brian, for clarifying that. Next slide, please. So communications, obviously communications during this period is are as critical. And we've got some key information for you. We've talked a lot about the various websites. Next slide, please. Um we are in the process right now of finalizing. A uh flood preparedness guide uh for the Schultz Pipeline Flood Area. Those of you that were there during Schultz, you'll remember that. We produced one every year. It has really good information. Um just across the board, a number of things. In particular, want to emphasize is the chair did upfront. Uh to purchase flood insurance immediately. Um it that's really critical. And I'll come back and speak to that again here in a minute. But there is the the website. You can contact your agent. Uh but certainly know that flood insurance is not a part of your homeowner's insurance. You have to buy a separate policy, uh which which is actually issued by the National Flood Insurance Program. Uh although your your agent could potentially facilitate that, if they don't facilitate that. You can contact this website and and sign up there. They also have a phone number. Uh we've got the call center number there. But again, really want to emphasize. To communicate with us through email. It'll be so much more effective. And and we'll be able to respond so much more quickly. And and take broader sets of questions and address those. And we'll talk about that more in a minute, too. And there is the the critical uh website. Please, please be checking the website. I would right now, over the next several days, be checking that website two to three times a day. Because we will be loading up those maps that Chris Duzis showed, those exhibits and maps indicating what homes. Need are recommended for mitigation and what form of mitigation. And again, obviously, through that email, get us your contact information as quickly as possible. Also, it's got the link to the Weather Service, uh the the Flagstaff Burn Scar Flood Risk. As well as to the rain gauge. Next slide, please. This just emphasizes again some of the points I just made. Make sure you sign up for emergency notifications. Purchase your flood insurance. Check the monitor, the rain gauges. Uh and and then that daily risk uh uh a product that the National Weather Service is now producing, which we really, really appreciate. Next website, uh next side piece. So we've gotten some questions about flood insurance and the waiting period exceptions. Here's some of the information from from FEMA. Um as many of you will recall, uh we worked with Senator John McCain before his passing. Right after the Schultz fire, and he was successful in getting legislation passed that. If a fire was initiated on national forest land or on federal land. Uh that FEMA could consider waiving the thirty day waiting period. It's a FEMA decision. We do not control that decision. Um but um we've, you know, we've seen that employed uh in both here and in other areas, employed for museum. But again, really strongly encourage people to immediately purchase flood insurance. Blood insurance is the only way that you can recover any cost of damage to your home. Um and a lot of people say, well, won't FEMA come pay us if our home gets damaged with flooding? You have to meet a very, very high threshold of damage across an area to even qualify. For what's called individual assistance to homeowners. And um the maximum amount of money that you can secure, if you were to, if we did qualify, which is unlikely. We never did through Schultz. Um is thirty two thousand dollars, whereas flood insurance policy goes up to two hundred and fifty thousand. So. Certainly, I know that may not cover certainly the cost of your home, but. Um it's the only option that you have to recover any of that cost. Um. So again, the website's there. And certainly, if you have questions, again, we are not the experts. Please call. Uh the National Flood Insurance Program if you have questions. Um this is not a special FEMA special flood hazard area. So. The insurance I just paid for my insurance, I'm not in a special flood hazard area and it cost me. My memory is it was about six, six forty or six fifty, six hundred and fifty dollars. It has gone up. It's gone up across the country. It's it's not due to Schultz or or the current fires. Next slide, please. So again, this just reiterates how to communicate. If you are with the media and you're watching this evening. Uh and you have some additional questions, please reach out to our Public Affairs Director, Trey Williams. And there's his contact information. Um we will work with you, but again. Uh we're we are all exceptionally busy and I really ask you to to. There's tremendous amount of information. And again, all these flood maps and the and the mitigation information will be posted on the website. Next slide, please. So for questions tonight, given the number of people that we have on. And the long and and a lot of detailed information. We're going to ask you to email the district if you have any questions. Related to what the information that was shared tonight. And again, know that. If you call and get us your email, we will send you the appropriate map that identifies the homes. That are at risk for flooding and what mitigation is proposed for that area. Those engineering firms are working as diligently as they can to get that information. We hope to start flowing that out. Uh no later than tomorrow. It may not all get out tomorrow, but we're doing the best we can. And again, check that website multiple times a day. And contact us if you have questions. We're gonna be developing a frequently asked questions piece, communication piece. There is one that's on the website now. We're tailoring one for this area. And as we get those questions, we will be updating that and again, posting it to the website. So keep an eye out for that. And a lot of even somewhat specific questions. May be able to be addressed through that more general uh frequently asked questions or FAQ. So with that, I want to thank all of our presenters tonight, all of our partners. Uh we're working very closely. I want everyone to know that we're working very, very closely, again, with the Natural Resources Conservation Service. That funded a lot of the the um both the emergency measures. Uh back in Schultz uh days, yeah, flooding and as well as the long term mitigation, significant funder of long term mitigation. And we are in communication with them and working with them. And uh right now, we've got to stay focused on the emergency measures. But we will be looking at the opportunity to look at longer term mitigation. Uh particularly for the corridors, obviously for the corridors that do not have mitigation uh currently. Encourage you to talk to your neighbors and uh begin to discuss and and talk about. Working with the district, with the Flood Control District relative to long term mitigation. And. Once we get through this season, we'll really be ramping up those conversations likely. And um and looking at those opportunities. And again, it'll be. Based on property owner by property owner agreeing to sign in a drainage system and willing to move forward. With the measures that are needed. So so with that, um uh I'm going ahead, see if the chair would like to. Say a good evening and uh you know, I love you all out there. I really care a great deal about all of you. And we're gonna do the best we can. Hang in there with us. Thank you. Yes, thank you, uh Lucinda, and also all the other uh presenters this evening. Obviously, that was extremely important information, uh a lot of information. And. This is being recorded. Uh you can go back or if a neighbor missed this. Uh ask them to go to the YouTube channel. Uh and if you go to the county website, that information will be there. So. Uh this is tremendous information. Once again, you know, we are, the county is doing what we can. Uh to uh get the information out and to assist our communities that are at risk here for some. Post wildfire flooding. We need them, we need, we need and want our monsoons, but uh we understand that there is. Risk associated and we're doing what we can. So with that, and members of the board, it has been a long evening. Uh and so I would ask uh that uh we go ahead and entertain a motion. To return as the Board of Supervisors. Do I have a motion?
A motion that we return to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Chair Vasquez. And I know you have been extremely busy out in these communities. So thank you for all your efforts. Uh do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
And thank you Supervisor Begay for all of your assistance as well. Um and uh we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. It's unanimous. We are now the Board of Supervisors. Remember the members of the board, this has been a long evening. So at this point. Unless there is anything further that you may have, I am going to ask that we adjourn this. Community meeting and ask that everybody please be safe uh and get your flood insurance. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone.